Good evening, everyone. We proceed each council meeting with a word of prayer and the pledge of allegiance. If you'd like to, please feel free to join us. Ms. Isby, can I get you to work our prayer?
Our gracious Father, we thank you for the abundant blessings that you've given us. We thank you, Lord, for this city that you've made us to be stewards of. And we pray, Lord, that everything that we do will be pleasing in your sight and at the end that you will give the glory. It's in your name that we pray. Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Tonight, we are here to look at the five-year contract for the ambulance service in Conway. We had two groups that was going to present. I think we have one group that's going to present tonight. When Mr. Finkenbinder let me know that according to our policy as a city, we were supposed to do this every five years, and time rolled around to do that, then that's exactly what we're going to do tonight, is take a look at this. I put together a task force made up of medical professionals from the fire department, Chief Ledbetter, who was Assistant Chief of Conway Fire Department, was there when we implemented the EMT and EMS response for the fire department, played a major role in that. Then we have representatives of Conway Regional and Baptist Health, who both served on this. At this time, I will turn it over to City Councilman Mark Ledbetter, who was chairman of the task force.
Yes, as the mayor said, he got the task force together and chose me to lead them. We were on our task force. We have Amanda Erby, who's over the CCU at Conway Regional. We also have Robert Fury. I don't know if Robert's here tonight. Robert Fury was with us from Baptist Medical. And tonight, I'll read the statement that I've read to all of them. The City of Conway's five-year ambulance franchise contract is set to expire soon. Mayor Casper has asked this committee to interview two prospective providers, MEMS, Metropolitan Emergency Medical Services, our current vendor, and Pafford Medical Services. After the interviews, we will recommend to the mayor and city council, who the committee as a whole believes to be the best ambulance service for the city of Conway. Committee members, as well as presenting members, council, may ask questions of each other as they see needed. So at this time, tonight, we're hearing from Pafford, and I'm going to turn it over to Jamie Pafford-Gresham, CEO of the Pafford Emergency Medical Services.
Good evening. Well, first, thank you for having us back again. We appreciated the opportunity to present to you guys last week, for those of you that were able to listen to us. And I thought some great questions were asked by the committee, allowing us just to see into what you're thinking and what your issues were within the area. I'm actually very humbled to be before you today and being the possible future ambulance provider for your area. As he said, I am Jamie Pafford-Gresham. My parents founded the company in 1967 in Magnolia, Arkansas. I'm actually a second-generation ambulance provider, and today I am the CEO and 100% owner of the company. And it's woman-owned, and I have enjoyed it for about 25 years now. I don't know if I could say I've enjoyed it. I've endured it for the last 25 years. But it really has been a blessing to do what we do. And the exciting thing for me is I have two grown children that went through the U of A in Washtata Baptist. Sorry, they didn't come to Conway, but we spent a lot of time here playing ball over the years. But they're my third generation that I'm staring at in the face that love what our family does, so I'm excited about that. But when we talk about being positioned for the future, not only with them involved in the company, but we as a company are positioned because we are at the forefront of what is going on throughout the EMS industry. Our purpose keeps us grounded. I was blessed with parents that taught me and my brothers, I have two brothers as well that are in the ambulance business, and they really grounded us in the fact that, you know, taking care of people is very important, and I don't take that job lightly. But as we move forward and being positioned for the future, we serve on many boards. I have a wonderful leadership group around me that surrounds me, and not only do I serve on the American Ambulance Association Board, but as the secretary on the executive committee, but I've worked through the government affairs portion of their organization, as well as the Arkansas Ambulance Association and the N A E M T Association, just staying abreast of what goes on and what changes are out there for the industry and what's on the horizon, just to keep us sharpened with our skills and with the things that we offer our communities. You know, that in itself has helped us build a very strong network, not only across the nation, but across the state. I currently service over 20% of the state of Arkansas, and we have some wonderful networking capabilities across the state, whether it be from a sheriff's department standpoint or the mayors throughout the service areas that we have, as well as folks at the health department. So the networking that we have done over the last 55 years definitely pays off, and a lot of people are a phone call away. You know, many people know of Pafford from the past. I get excited when I talk about the Pafford of the future and the Pafford that you have before you today. We have open roundtable discussions about what goes on at Pafford, and I have surrounded myself with highly educated leadership team that knows what they're doing and loves to take care of people like what I do, and that allows us to make the best decisions for our communities in which we serve. And that's actually what we've done here for you today, is that we've all came around this, we used to say the supper table, because that's where our board meetings were, we're at the supper table, but we have came together and put together a proposal for you in Conway and Faulkner County, if they so choose to move that direction, that we think best fits the needs of your community and what we see that you need. When we talk about assets, I can have the coolest equipment, and some people say I do, and I can have the prettiest trucks, but if I don't have good men and women, well-trained in our profession, then I'm not worth anything. They are my greatest asset, and I get to talk about them a little bit as we give our presentation. But I do not take lightly that the people that work for Pafford are own loan to me and my family and our communities, and that we want them to go home safe after each and every shift. Unfortunately, we have lost some folks in the line of duty, and it's one of the worst things that could ever happen to you as a leader, and so we take safety in our company very, very seriously. I have a very large footprint when you talk about Pafford. Now, me personally, I like for everybody to know that I'm a small rural ambulance provider from Arkansas, and that's about all I want them to know, but when you dig a little deeper about Pafford, you will find out that we actually have a very large footprint, and we're in five states and the U.S. Virgin Islands, and that's a story all in itself. But in Arkansas, as we've discussed, Arkansas, Louisiana, Mississippi, Oklahoma, and I have several government contracts out of Pennsylvania, and then we actually have over 400 personnel on all three territories in the U.S. Virgin Islands, taking care of their health care, their EMS systems, and all of their different medical facilities they have on the island. We have about 90% of their workforce right now. But when we just go back to Arkansas, we have about 20 counties that we cover in the state, and we are the largest provider of EMS services throughout the state. And that's fine and okay, go ahead and put, you know, the feather in the hat there. The fact is, no two services are alike, and so great, I have a lot of services and a lot of footprint, but each and every service has its own set of guidelines that we go by. What I do in Hempstead County has nothing to do with what I do in Mississippi County, for the most part. They have their own guidelines and regulations that I follow, other than the state. We just want to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the communities in which we serve. Everybody says I have to brag a little bit, but I don't like doing that. I have actually been inducted into the EMS Hall of Fame, and I am very proud of my heritage and the EMS profession in itself, and I enjoy talking all things ambulance, and that was just basically recognized because I like to take care of the provider. Our ambulance service here in Arkansas received ALS Service of the Year for the state, and here just last year, we received the Business of the Year for Hope in Hempstead County. And unbeknownst to me, they nominated me for the National Ambulance Service of the Year, and my team took away that honor out of 14,000 ambulance services across the United States. So I don't brag on myself on that one. I have an awesome group of people that's behind me that help me take care of business. And just to give you an idea of the size, I like to say that I'm small, but we actually service, have around 1,600 employees throughout Pafford in that five-state area, as well as over 200 ambulances and three helicopters and three fixed-wing airplanes. So I like to just take care of business locally, but when I need to, I do have the resources to take care of business elsewhere. We provide a lot of services for our communities, and we feel like that one call does it all, and we want to take care of your needs that you have out there. You know, of course, we operate our 911 center. And full disclosure, I actually serve at the governor's pleasure on the 911 board for the state of Arkansas, and that's been a very interesting endeavor the last two years. I'm sure as a city and county, you guys have dealt with that a lot. But we have our own dispatch center. Some of our communities choose to use the dispatch center, and our emergency dispatching, and some do not, and that's a choice of yours. We, of course, provide, like I said, ground ambulances with over 200 ambulances, as well as the fixed-wing aircrafts. And I've been billing Medicare myself since I was 13 years old, but my family in itself has been billing Medicare since its inception. So I learned from my mother, and I think she taught me a lot of good things about that, and I actually enjoy figuring out how we're going to get a bill paid without the patient having to come up with the funds. That's very important to me, especially as we talk, that we see everything about surprise billing and things like that in the news. We're very cognizant of that as a family. We have, you know, the help falling and can't get up, as well as our own site services, whether you have a big function here in the town, or we actually do concerts and things like that, as well as we do a lot of disaster, things that the hurricanes and different things like that, and we have a wonderful SRT team, the Specialty Response Team, that responds. Now, I told you all of that, not to bore you, but to let you know that we have a lot going on at Pafford, and we're big enough to take care of your needs, but at the same time, we're very cognizant of making sure that you have special attention, because each and every one of our locations has to take care of themselves and stand on their own. I absolutely do not do this alone, and my chief operating officer, Clay Hobbs, is going to go through what we've designed for Conway and especially for you. And every once in a while, I'll get up and add my two cents in when I think it's needed and we do better working as a team. But if you would hold your questions to the end, I know the other day when we were working through things, we actually had the questions answered on the next slide, and we'll be cognizant of your time tonight and make sure that we can get through it. But please write them down and ask them at the end.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Clay Hobbs, and I'm the chief operating officer for Pafford Medical Services, and thank you for having us here this evening to present to you. We looked at the overall design of the EMS system for Conway and decided that one of the best options and opportunities was to integrate the EMS system into the fire department. We do that in many communities across the country. Seven years ago, we started with that system in Mississippi. So we've been working with the fire department the last few meetings to decide what's the best way to put ambulances into what fire stations and so forth. We believe that we need to integrate with Conway's hospitals. We heard from the hospitals loud and clear, and we believe that we can integrate our EMS system with Conway Regional and Baptist Health as one seamless healthcare partner with them. We believe in having an advanced life support EMS system for Conway in which there would be a tiered response. 911 pre-arrival instructions would be provided to 911 callers, fire department first responders would arrive in fire engines, and there would be BLS and ALS transport ambulances available to transport patients to hospitals. We believe in planning together, training together, and responding together. With a public-private partnership and placing the ambulances in fire stations, we're able to put the resources out into the community and they're pre-positioned to decrease the response times to medical emergencies. This also gives us the ability to move resources within the service area and operate in a system status management program. We believe in planning with each hospital to facilitate what their needs are, what types of transports do they have, and how do we help them keep their beds open on the floor so they can decrease the emergency room wait time as we're arriving by ambulance. We also have integration with our mobile integrated healthcare system that allows us to help hospitals complete remote patient monitoring and provide other community paramedic Response times are very important, and we heard loud and clear from the committee that these response times were paramount in our presentation. We propose responding to life-threatening medical emergencies, which we consider a priority-one emergency, in eight minutes and 59 seconds. Priority-two, non-emergency calls, in 12 minutes and 59 seconds. And we also wanted to have a marker in there for our hospital transports. So for non-emergent hospital transports, we proposed 48 minutes and 59 seconds. This would include someone being discharged from a nursing floor. And then emergent transports, 29 minutes and 59 seconds. These response times don't reflect the time that it's going to take us to arrive for a 911 call or for a transport, but we know that over time, there's going to be fractile response time consideration given for how long it's going to take us to respond to those emergencies. So these times meet national standard, and I think would be agreeable to your committee. We've spent a considerable amount of time reviewing the data that we received from Conway's 911 system and put together a heat map of the travel time it would take us to travel from fire stations to different communities and residents that had previously called 911 for medical emergencies over the last couple of years. As you see, we put that data together there. Our station and post-mapping, we propose placing ambulances in fire stations. We've initially identified fire stations where ambulances would be placed that would minimize the amount of time it takes residents in the community to get an ambulance. This is not in stone. This is something that will definitely be evolving, and we will have to make sure that we have ambulances in the right locations. But given the data that we have, this was the initial onset of what we thought would be the best place to put ambulances. Utilizing the data from the 911 system, we were able to arrive that there was an average response time by a fire apparatus of four minutes and 14 seconds across the community, and we believe that our ambulance response times can closely mirror that because the ambulances will be there with the fire engines. We initially will place four ambulances that will be staffed within the fire stations and one redundant ambulance that can be staffed by fire department personnel if we have no other ambulance available. We know that we will have to place additional resources to accommodate the call volume and to accommodate the hospital. This is just an initial immediate placement. We will work with the fire department to determine the placement of the additional ambulances. We're very cognizant that Conway is the big brother to Faulkner County and that you are looking out for Valonia Mae Flower and Green Bar, and we're very cognizant of that. We want to make sure that we work with the county to place ambulances if needed in those communities, and we plan on placing enough ambulances to meet the call volume. As we talk about communications, the first first responder is that 911 operator that answers a 911 call for someone having a medical emergency. We propose utilizing and integrating the Conway 911 center so that ambulances are simultaneously dispatched with fire engines, and we're able to respond in one unit. We follow the International Academies of Emergency Dispatch, EMD Protocol, and we were just this week awarded ACE accreditation for our communication center, or the 299th center in the world to meet accreditation. We would also utilize integration with our MedCom Communication Center, which is our regional 911 center, that would provide redundant communication capabilities and provide AVL and GPS feed to Conway 911 so that the local dispatchers here can see where the ambulances are in real time. We talk about the fleet of five ambulances. We would also place a response vehicle here for a supervisor and a disaster rehabilitation trailer for firefighter rehab during large-scale events. We want the community to have ownership in the Conway ambulance service, so we've proposed branding the fleet here to match that of the city of Conway, so that people here in the city understand that it's their ambulance, it's their resource. And here are just a couple examples of how we have branded in other communities so that people... And here are just a couple um, examples of how we have branded in other communities, um, so that people recognize that it is Conway's resource. We have the, what I believe is the best equipment on our ambulances for our paramedics to take care of our community. We have Stryker power cots, power load systems. We have Zoll X-series monitors and Zoll ventilators on every paramedic ambulance. We believe in our equipment being able to interface with the first responder community, and we were very happy to hear that um, the fire department here has a Zoll X-series cardiac monitors on their fire engines. This allows us to seamlessly transfer care from a fire engine crew to the ambulance with just a simple plug-and-play of the cables. Medical equipment and supplies, we will provide a one-on-one exchange for all first responder agencies, and then provide other medical equipment as needed.
And I would say, just at that point, a lot of the, you know, you see the, the cardiac monitor, and it probably doesn't mean anything to you or the stretcher itself. One of the best investments that I made um, for our associates were the power cots. Um, after years and years of bending down and busting knees and hurting backs, it was obvious we have to do something. We are self-insured, and we take our safety very seriously, as I told you earlier, and these were some of the things, the steps that we took to make sure that we could mitigate as many problems as we possibly could. And when we talk about um, the actual um, ambulances and the equipment that they have, the education to go along with that is just as important as a piece of equipment, because there's no worse feeling to have a patient that you cannot help or you have a piece of broken equipment. So, that's very important, and it's an investment that we've made into our system to make us what we call Pafford proud and Pafford strong, in the sense that we feel like we're going to be able to provide the best possible care we can with the equipment and the personnel that we have.
So, we believe here at the city of Conway that we would have around eighteen full-time paramedics and twenty-four part uh, full-time EMTs. In addition to some supervisory staff and an operations manager that would be dedicated to Conway.
A lot of people talk about um, their staffing situation. We're no different than anyone else. Everyone in the healthcare market and everywhere else, and in fact, that's true, that we're all struggling to find um, folks to help. Uh, we feel like that we've been able to mitigate that problem just a little bit, and what I was sharing with the group the other day is that um, when you talk about attrition and, and the folks that um, have chosen another line of work, what we saw is in the communities where people cared um, the most. Not saying that others don't, but when you were in your own hometown and you were taking care of your people, just like the nurses at the, that you are and things, and they know folks, those folks seemed to stay around, and we didn't lose them um, to this pandemic. Though one of, part of what we did is we wanted to make sure during this COVID crisis that we took care of our most valuable asset, which was our people. And with that being said, you know, right after patient zero that we had three of our employees come in contact with, we realized we had to do something to maintain our staff and keep them healthy, and not only them healthy, but their families healthy. And we did that through several processes.
So, early on, we opened our emergency operations center early on day one, and it's been staffed and it's been operational since that, that first patient. But we knew that we had to take care of our employees. We immediately assigned an employee health nurse to monitor our employees' health, to mitigate any illnesses that they had. And then we also employed a nurse practitioner that could further help them and provide care. We not only provided this for our employees, but we also provided this for their employees' families, so that they could, uh, could be taken care of. We provided employee COVID testing, and we secured PPE. We run a lot of ambulance calls each year, so you can just imagine the amount of PPE it takes to, to take care of a COVID response in a COVID situation. We've also strengthened our community partnership with our healthcare providers. We've assisted our hospitals and our counties and our cities with COVID testing and hospital transfer coordination, amongst other things that have just been paramount in allowing us to, uh, to take care of our staff. These are just a few pictures of things that we did during COVID and just what our paramedics look like when they're coming out into the community to take care of someone. We believe in transparency and accountability, and that accountability is each and every day. Every morning, we provide unaudited reports of the daily operation from the previous twenty-four hour period that includes a number of transports, the response times, and just some raw data, so that your fire chief and your mayor and your elected officials know what's truly happened with the EMS system in the previous twenty-four hours. We also provide monthly performance reports, and we encourage monthly or quarterly meetings with an EMS committee. Our clinical operations are one of our most important aspects of what we do. We believe in having um, local involvement with our medical direction, and we would have local physician involvement with Conway Regional and Baptist Conway to make sure that the hospitals both are interfaced with the ambulance service. Our advanced life support equipment on each ambulance is state-of-the-art, including our cardiac monitors, our ventilators, and our mechanical CPR devices. We have a quality assurance and review policy that's in place to monitor the clinical performance indicators and patient satisfaction. We wanna make sure that our end-users of the ambulance service are happy with the service that they're getting. As far as integration goes, we believe in one team and one mission, and that begins with collaboration from day one. We believe in collaborating with the fire department and Conway hospitals to develop a world-class EMS system for Conway. We believe in involving medical direction, first responders, making sure that they're oriented to the ambulances that are in the communities, by providing continuing education for first responders and training classes for first responders and EMTs.
I think it's important to note, this, this is a very important slide here. From what we could tell, you guys really want your finger on the pulse of what's going on and what resources you have in our, in your community. And it was our goal, one, to be transparent, as we are with all of our, we actually call that daily sheet the daily bread for those of you, kind of, y'all, y'all will catch on to that, but the daily bread that comes out to make sure that the chief and others know what's going on and the number of units that are within your system. But it's very important for you to realize, what we're asking you to do here is to have a private-public partnership, and that we're both in this together in the sense that we do feel like that putting the, our trucks in your station is going to provide better response times, better control from the city um, standpoint, because you're going to know who's there, you're gonna know when they're there. And then you have the third leg of the stool. We always like to talk about fire police and EMS, and the fact that the third leg of the stool is usually EMS, and they're not in most conversations most days. But when you have a bad scene and you've taken care of a patient, and you get to go back to the fire station and you get to talk to the other guys that helped you work the scene about what the outcome was or what you could have done better, that's a blessing in itself, because you're only gonna have better patient care as we move forward if we're able to work together to make sure that we're, we're providing the best service we can. So, that's why the integration in this system is very important, and it's something that very, very few people are doing, um, because they're a little leery to mesh the two together, but in the communities in which we've done it, we've been very, very successful. And part of that is through really good communication and knowing what's going on. And that's why we also have the key performance indicators at the um, fire department and, and your committee. We, we are believers in meeting and making sure that we're addressing your concerns often and not reading about it in the paper or hearing about it on TV. We wanna know the next morning that you had an issue last night, and what do we need to do to fix it? And a lot of that will be taken care of with these things.
Definitely. So, just of our key performance indicators, we'll monitor the response times, which is important. People wanna get an ambulance quickly when they call nine-one-one. That's the most important thing, but we wanna make sure that ambulance arrives there to provide the best clinical care and that we have good patient outcomes when the patient gets to the hospital. That's really what it's all about, because each time that we respond to a nine-one-one call, we're going to take care of someone's loved one. Someone's mother, someone's child, that we're going to take care of, so we need to make sure that we have those um, indicators in place. We also wanna make sure that we are managing any customer satisfaction concerns, complaint management, um, employee satisfaction, our utilization of mutual aid, and our safety. Very, very big about safety. Each of our ambulances has an onboard computer that monitors the driving and performance of the ambulance, in addition to a camera system that monitors all aspects of the ambulance, um, in case that we do have an accident. We wanna be able to know what happened and, and be accountable.
And you know, the guys really thought this was a big brother system, and I'm sure that the uh, police department and sheriff's department had to go through this as well with their body cams. They really felt like we were spying on them, or, uh, this has been years ago, but they, they just weren't comfortable with it. And after the first few fender benders and, and things that happened, they realized that we had their back. That this was something, that this was a tool that they could be proud of, whether it was with, with patient care in the back, and there was an incident that happened, and it could, you know, exonerate them, or if it was an accident that happened, and then they were able to say, that guy pulled out in front of me, and he really did pull out in front of me, and had the footage. So, this was one of our safety moves to, to make it a safer environment for the folks. Community outreach is huge for us. I mean, to whom much is given, much is expected, and we don't take that lightly. And um, not only have I taught my kids that, but I wanted to reach out um, into, into our workforce as well. We work through the Stockton League, uh, CPR training, and just making sure that folks see our medics in the community before the two AM phone call where you're allowing us in your house. We want you to be very comfortable with the program that you have here, and that's why we want you to have ownership of what's going on and that we're accountable to you, because the face of Pafford is not me. It's the men and women that are on our truck, that are in your communities. And we want them to be seen before the actual ambulance call, if all is possible. We're uh, I think that we're a very good corporate citizen, and um, we try our best to take care of our communities and be involved in many ways as we possibly can, that doesn't affect the, um, our ambulance response.
Well, we've had some growth today, and just um, just to let you know, we, we took over the Saline County ambulance service this morning. And then at the same time in tandem, we took over another ambulance service in the Oklahoma City metropolitan area of Mustang. And so, we've had steady growth. It's been very deliberate. Um, it's been researched and well-thought-out. Uh, we get invited to a lot of communities. Every week, we get a call, will you come here and provide ambulance service to our community or our county? And unfortunately, we turn a lot of those communities down, because they just aren't a good match for us. We have to have a good feeling that we can provide a great service to the community and that we have the resources and capability that that community and that city wants. So, uh, that just is a part of our growth here um, today, which is just amazing to have that come on um, and bolster our Arkansas operation.
One of the things that I've really um, always been very, very honest, to make sure that I don't sink my ownership, uh, being too proud and pulling too much in. So, everything that we do is um, gauged. I have a wonderful banking relationship um, with my banker, and he's allowed us to do a good bit of growth. And of course, he's approved uh, anything that I can do in Conway and Faulkner County. He's definitely supportive of. And I think that it's very important. I started um, as well this month, a new billing company in the Oklahoma City region. And um, I have twelve ladies that are starting there that are already very proficient in uh, EMS billing, just to make sure that I could always continue to carry the workload that was needed and that we were properly funded um, throughout. So, uh, when you see growth, it's a positive thing, because it allows us um, to make sure that we're at the forefront of what's going on and that we're taking care of our communities and that we're still communicating with the folks that we answer to. So, um, it is a blessing to, to have folks call you, but I think we're also mindful of when we say, yes, we're interested, and we are interested in your community.
Jamie was featured yesterday in EMS World Magazine through a question-and-answer period, so we were very proud of her to, to be chosen on the national spotlight, and she got to, to answer some questions about the ambulance industry yesterday.
Very proud moment uh, for me, like I told you a while ago. Um, we love taking care of people, and I believe that if I can take care of my folks, they're going to turn around and take care of you. We joke around, and we've done this for a very long time. You know, we tell our, our medics that we want you to treat each and every patient like a family member um, with your care, but I also go one step further and say, that's the family member you like, not the one you dislike, but it's the family member you like. And they always have to get a tackle out of it. But as I told you, it's just not me. I have a wonderful team, and this is, happens to be most of my family are, around um, as well. I have two brothers, Greg and John, uh, that operate in um, Louisiana and Mississippi in the, the air service as well. As Greg has a son that's in the business, Alex, and then I have my uh, two kids, Suzie and Garrett. And the great thing about Pafford right now is that we're in a growth mode. Um, the kids all have the different clinics and testing and things that they've done, and just like to see the horizontal growth, but at the end of the day, it still comes back to taking care of people. And we feel like that we have the values that your community um, would like to see in it, and we would love to be accountable to you. And it really humbles me to be able to even present to you, and I think that um, over the years, I've loved to watch the growth that you've had, and it's um, really a blessing to have been asked to be here today.
We'll answer any questions that you might have.
Counsel, any questions? They're here to answer. Answer them.
I would, if you don't mind. Um, and we might need to get the fire chief up to address some of these as well.
Come on up, Mike.
Since you have your own dispatch center available. Chief, how would we propose to integrate with that particular situation?
Initially, we will do a, take the nine-one-one call at the Conway Dispatch Center, get the initial information, patient address, what's going on, transfer the care, or transfer the phone call to Pafford, uh, to their dispatch center. They would dispatch their ambulance, their resources, uh, and we would continue to dispatch ours. We would hope at some time in the future, we could get our dispatch trained to emergency medical dispatch level and somehow integrate with Pafford at our center.
And although I said everybody was cookie cutter, um, I think what we have just done in Saline County, if you wanna point out to them what we did with their system and how we integrated uh, EMD, what we offer.
So, they developed a consolidated communication center in Saline County, and they wanted to keep that peace within the community. So, we came in and provided training for them, uh, for their dispatchers to bring them up to national standard. And we did that over a couple-month period, and they're now going to be able to provide their own pre-arrival instructions in their community. We're still their backup, and we're there, you know, twenty-four-seven to help them, um, and we monitor the radio system, and so we know where the ambulances are. But they control those, those resources.
Ideally, when they get paged, we get paged. We're all rolling at the same time, or else our guys tend to be going, why are y'all leaving and we're not leaving? What's, what's going on here? There's communication there.
And you brought, you brought up a point that I would like to ask about, if we're going to house in the same location, is there a need to have both sets of wheels rolling? Uh, Ms. Pafford, you might want to address this.
Well, I think it's priority. We wanna be cognizant, we wanna be mindful of the resources, what we have, and that we're not being wasteful of anything we have. And so, through the partnership, it's up to us to say, what is priority one? What does the fire department need to respond to? And that making sure that we both agree with the list of calls that they will roll a truck on and that they need to, as well as that they, they may not need to go out for the stump tow, and they, of course, they don't, and we don't wanna utilize that resource as such. So, you, chief, you wanna add anything to that?
Well, uh, exactly. Probably six years ago, we reduced the type of calls that we were responding to. Uh, at that time, we were responding to a nosebleed, um, an earache, and I felt like that was not something that we needed uh, to run a fire truck on. About two years ago, we went back to running on everything, um, just because of the necessity. As she was talking about, we could revisit their, you know, the top priority calls that we need fire and ambulance on. Uh, the, the cardiac arrest, the strokes, the diabetic emergencies, respiratory emergencies, things of that nature. So, uh, getting, cooperating with Pafford, scaling down our responses is certainly back on the table. Thank you.
We definitely wanna have that extra set of hands on that difficult patient. We also do this in Rogers, Arkansas as well. We work with the fire department, and they have a specific guideline of what they want to respond to and then what they expect us to, to follow up with. Lots and sirens aren't always the best. I mean, I think both of us wanna be very mindful of that, running through the town and, and not do that when we don't need to, but yet have the resource at hand.
Hey, Jamie, I wanna ask you, um, have, have you visited all the fire stations um, that your people would be located out of? Did you physically go?
I went to a couple of them, and then the guys went to the others.
Which ones did you go to?
Went to the mains, the main one here. And then you'd have to pull back up the map, and then I drove by one of the other ones. And when we came, we weren't real, we were, honestly, I've only been here once to talk to the, the fire chief about it. And so, my director of operations for Arkansas went the, uh, with Clay and also made the rounds with everybody to see the actual stations and the setup.
Mike, do you remember which ones that they, they actually, she sent her, her people into, the two?
No. Okay. Who took them around? I think they just drove. We did. We drove around.
There's another station that we talked about putting our extra.
But did y'all physically go in those locations, other than central?
The big one, and then I bypassed one that y'all are not using anymore, not bypassed.
But actually go inside and look around to see how facilities are laid out?
That I went into inside. We drove by the locations of them and drove by, but that was the extent.
Yeah. My, my main concern is for firefighters and, and y'all as well, for your people, there's not a lot of- there's not a lot of room in some of those fire stations at all to house three, two, three more people. And so that is a concern of mine that I have and I didn't know if you had any thoughts on, on that perspective or not.
So I think our shifts, the type of shifts that we want to work here, whether they'll be 12 or 24 and how much time they'll actually spend in the station itself. And then we would of course be mindful to make sure that there is room. And we had discussed that just with them in general and they felt comfortable that there was the space to do that.
Yeah. And the beds are a main thing too, that nobody wants to sleep on someone else's mattress really. And you don't know they're coming in from a cold late, if they're going to shower, if they're going to come in sweaty and get in bed. I mean, th- those are concerns of mine. And then any other furniture needs that we may need to, for your people to sit on or whatever. I didn't know, you know, about any of those.
In our new station that we just did, that we're actually in the stations in Saline County and Brighton Benton. And so we actually purchased additional equipment. We sold furniture to go there.
Beds, furniture.
As well as made sure that from an eating standpoint, evidently these guys like to cook a lot, that we also were mindful of that and that there was a budget given to take care of that at the fire stations for food and stuff. And I think one of the things that we, we need to look at is, and I appreciate you thinking about the guys and their, and their comfort and everything, is that it feels like that there's a bleed here and we really need to take a hard look at how we're responding to calls here and how we can get an asset and a resource to our citizens in a timely fashion. And right now, we feel like that's the best option is to put these people in the fire station. Now, we had a very direct conversation about, we historically knew that that was something that this city wanted just through conversations over the years. We know Conway would love at some point in time to possibly have their own ambulance service within their fire station. You see a wave that goes to it and you see a wave that goes away from it. We feel like we're the solution in the middle without having to take on the medical side burden and, and the whole ambulance service as a whole. But you're able to give your community what it needs in a timely fashion and still have control of that asset in some way. That's what we feel like we're doing here. Now, if we get into this and, and Chief says, this isn't working, we don't have enough room or we need to do something different, then at that point in time, and that comes through communication and month, you know, monthly meetings with y'all, to be able to say that this isn't working, we need to try something different and then we're willing to do this. You know, on a go forward, I'm not asking for a subsidy, but what I am asking with, for is a partnership to make sure that we can make these things happen. And that is also part of having the ambulances housed in your station is that you're not having to worry about that extra expense. And they're spread out. Your resources are where your community is.
Do you pay a subsidy to any other cities that you house the ambulances in, in-house?
No, pay subsidies.
What, do you pay?
A mil, a minimal rent, I think for a couple of them.
Okay, like Bryant, for example. What, what, what are y'all paying Bryant for y'all to house in our firehouses?
So don't hold me to this, but I think it's like $700 a month.
It's very minimal.
For one station or for all?
For one station.
For one station.
They didn't want for all stations. It was just, they had a new station, so it wasn't done like that.
It's just different in every community, you know, depending on call volume and stuff.
But Bryant, you pay 700 per?
It's around 700. I don't have the exact figure, it's close.
It's just that one station in Brighton is paying for it.
And it's 700 a month? I just want to make sure, I mean, we're, you know, this is taxpayer dollars that we're dealing with. And I just want to make sure when y'all come in, I mean, you're a profit company, that, that y'all are paying your fair share to be housed in our houses. And, you know, while the chief has a budget here, you know, toilet tissue, I mean, we're all these on a spending freeze. I don't know if we are now, but we usually always are, you know, rationing things out, you know, really watch what we have and that's going to come directly out of the fire budget.
And that's why we, there's a kitty. I don't know how else to describe it, but there is a kitty at each fire station that we have allotted so much money to help take care of those incidentals from the food to the paper products and things like that. So that was some of our discussion prior to. And I might say again, you know, we've been doing it for seven years over in, on our Mississippi areas and same way with Oklahoma, probably about four years now, I guess, to make that partnership work. And I understand the part about being a public or for-profit, but actually, you know, this is something that the city would take on a huge financial burden to be able to do, but yet it's still your responsibility to do. So it's the public-private partnership that you see is a give and take because I'm definitely making the investment on the equipment side and things of that nature. And so that's where that public-private partnership comes in.
Well, I mean, MEMS has been here for the last 18 years. They never required us to let them stay in our houses or anything. They, they had areas located around. I wouldn't have even requested any kind of money from them because they weren't housed in our houses. But I just feel like that's an issue with me, that I feel like y'all need to be paying the city something besides, you know, just a little bit of a kitty, you know, to take care of things.
Could, could y'all approach the microphone? I've just got a text from someone who's watching on TV saying he can't hear you.
Sorry.
It's okay.
So I can appreciate what you're saying. At the same time, I, I do feel strongly that historically, the EMS system has not been properly integrated into the, the public safety realm of many communities. And that's what we feel like we are doing in the quasi-partnership with the fire department in this way.
Chief, I'd like to hear your thoughts on this.
So I love it. I absolutely love the ambulance service being in the fire stations to be able to respond as quick as the fire engines do. As she showed, you know, their estimated time of our arrivals right at four minutes. I think I have it a little bit quicker than that, but that puts an ambulance right on our tailboard most of the time. And our ultimate goal is patient care and getting that patient to a facility, you know, to the hospital as quickly as possible with the best care that's possible. And I, I absolutely love the model. I had even talked about it with some of my staff members before we ever knew of Pafford. You know, that I would love for MEMS to be in our stations. It, it merges the two services together and makes a stronger bond to come together as one.
Mike, you and I spoke about a couple of the stations don't have very much room. I mean, we, you know, four is one of them. Not sure where parking, I mean, it's, it's a whole gamut of things, not just sleeping and where they're sitting and this. But do you have any solutions for that down the road, what, what to do?
I'd love to expand the stations.
Yeah, nice try.
I know, but we got to think about our people too.
Chief, let me better, what year did we, what year did we expand all our stations? We? Yeah.
But we've got a lot more people onboard than we did in 2005.
I don't, we had, we had two man stations at the time and I think we have three man stations now.
One Salem initially, a one man station.
They were all one man stations. Let me better, when I went to work, everything was one man.
I don't know if any of y'all seen the stations that they're talking about putting this in, but there, some of them are small. I mean, you know, fit a few more people in, it's, it's going to be difficult and, you know.
That's a concern I have.
I mean, I definitely do. I don't know if y'all been, but I went over the weekend and I was, I was like, oh my gosh, where are we gonna, where are we gonna put even a couple more people? Is my concern. You know, because we got to think about our people and the, the citizens' wellbeing, you know, getting them taken care of as well. And, and, you know, I just want to make sure that, that it's a great French, you know, marriage for everybody involved. And that's the thing that I've got a hiccup with, I guess, that, that they're going to be in our houses and not paying anything to be there. And, and they're making a lot of money being in Conway or they wouldn't want to come here.
Okay, one, really, I'm only going to say one thing tonight. I'm not going, who the fuck? Trust me, this is just going to be one thing tonight. I, I see the concern. I see the concern about the tenant in the fire department and I understand that. And I'm sure tax people, taxpayers understand that. But I can also say that it's been a long time coming for support and for them not to be in the fire department. And let me explain to you why. And I'm sure if y'all have been out, y'all seen this numerous, numerous times. Fire trucks there, police officers there, people waiting to be picked up. It was an accident in front of my house, directly in front of my house. Four police units showed up, two fire trucks had showed up and we still waiting on an ambulance. And I think it's a plus to have in the fire department. If we can figure out a way to make it work, trust me, it's, it's, I have had to have a, anyway. And it's bad when the fire department in there, I mean, it was good they were in there working on me, but where's the ambulance? You see what I'm saying? They could have came as well as the fire department. So we need to figure out a way to make this work. I mean, I understand your concern and I probably wouldn't want to be crap either. But if there's some way we can make this work where they fall into fire trucks instead of coming 20 blocks away and getting there 20 minutes later, I think that'd be a plus for people. Because if, like, like the police and firemen, you never want them till you want them.
I have a question from Ms. Gresham. You, I think you mentioned you would have one ambulance in four different stations. So typically, how many people or how much personnel would you have on each ambulance at each station? Two? So you're talking about adding two people at a time to these stations?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And again, they're built for three. Well, and then three.
Well, now, and we had looked for another location for the supervisor was, we had looked for another location for the supervisor was, is my understanding. And then that fourth truck that we have, we, or the fifth truck actually, is a redundant truck that is actually in your station that worst case scenario, when all of the other ambulances that are out, that we have provided that resource. That's my give back in that sense, is that I am providing another truck that I'm not manning, but that you have the, the ability to utilize. So that's kind of my give back when you talk about the, the partnership and the fees to be charged. I'm putting an asset in your fire station that I, just this is something to think about. And I don't think we explained that well a while ago, that there is one vehicle that we're giving to the fire department to make sure that if all other ambulances are out, we can ring the bell and someone come running to help out with that extra.
Well, I, I agree with Theo and Chief that this, it does make more sense to have them there. It absolutely does, no question about it. But I certainly agree with Mary about space. I mean, two people, not very many, but if they're in a three-person house, it's already full of three people. That's, gets pretty full pretty quick. Now, I, I would assume we can probably come up with some creative ideas and I'll wait and see what we can come up with. Were your ambulances, will they need to be housed under a roof or can they, will they be housed outside?
We have looked at all the four stations that they have designated and we do have room in the station in the bay.
Do we have any equipment we're moving out and having to take somewhere else or?
Yes, it's reserve equipment that we will relocate at the training site. And those are used for when we have to put an engine into the shop. We'll run by, pick up the reserve and.
And I know, Chief, you and I spoke about this, we met the other day about, if there's any issue with their people or, you know, you were saying whoever's in charge of that shift is over. These people to tell them what to do.
Our house, our rules.
Okay, I want to make sure that's publicly said.
Absolutely, and I totally agree with you. If I'm staying at your house, under your roof, it's your rules and you need to get up and clean, you need to get up and clean. And so we totally agree with them.
Okay, what about liability if one of their people, since it's a separate company, they're not under the city of Conway umbrella? What will happen if, say, one of their people break their leg? You know, one of our guys tells him, hey, you need to go do this and something happens to them.
So they would be covered under our workers' comp insurance and then we have liability insurance, premise insurance for all the stations that we have equipment and personnel located at. And the city would be named as an additional insured under our liability policy.
Charles, is that, is that cover everything liability wise, what they're saying?
Yeah, it would. I would, I obviously need to see the wording, but what he's talking about would cover it.
Mayor, do you have the contract from Bryant with you?
It's in my office.
I mean, you know, what were the numbers on it, do you know?
Not, not right off the top of my head, Mary. I think, did you say $700 a, a station?
Just one station, they said $700?
I'm not, I'm not exactly sure that, but I know it's within the ballpark. They went back and forth and it may be less than that, but I'm thinking it's around 700.
We're, we're going to get it.
I'd like to see it.
So we're in two Bryant fire stations? We're in a total of four fire stations within the city, are within Saline County. And two of the stations do not charge us anything. Two of the cities do not.
I have a quick question. We've only talked about emergency services, I think, so far. So the medical transfer portion of it, are you guys going to do that as well for nursing home to hospital and all that kind of stuff?
That's just as important as the emergency side of it in the sense, and what we talked to with the hospital folks about last week was that, you know, we only have emergencies numbers, but we had a 30-minute conversation with the committee last week about the non-emergency needs within their, their space as well as the transfers out of their facility and being mindful of that. You saw the times that we had set up for that. And just making sure that if, if we're chosen, that we are meeting with them and making sure their needs are met and that it's very important that they can offload their patients and in a timely fashion. So we had a very large discussion about that.
Okay, I don't know what the numbers are as far as emergencies versus not emergency or anything like that, but is four ambulances enough to, to cover all the needs?
Um, we don't think so, but we are addressing the emergency situation. And if you're not happy and they're not happy, I'm not going to be in the ambulance business. And so to alleviate those complaints, we will make sure and be mindful that there are transfer availability here and a day truck for, if that be the need of it. But to make sure that we're addressing that situation as well because we understand that is part of the business and we take it very seriously as well.
Right, I mean, that's got to be your moneymaker, I'm sure, but.
There's been a lot of talk about money around this table, but it's a struggle this time.
It's just, that's just cold hard fact. I mean, so I just want to make sure that we, that, that the emergency thing is being met as well.
We work with our hospitals day in and day out and I, I have no problem working with them from day one. We've had some discussions and I think that we can provide them a robust transfer and discharge system that will meet their needs.
And we talked about that as well, that we have a system that can be electronic, you know, an, an app that they can utilize versus the phone, as well as not tying up the phone lines. And we had some of that discussion as well.
Well, I like the fact too, that if four ambulances are out doing a transfer, we still have that one reserve and we have, we have qualified personnel in the fire department to man that.
And that's worked well in our Piedmont location and I think Chief talked to the chief of Piedmont as well and they were very excited about that. That's just part of their equipment. We all take care of all of the equipment, but the, the last resort, it's, it's still a, not a brand new ambulance, but it is a reserve ambulance that they can utilize and it's, it's nice to have.
And where will it be located again?
Which station do you?
Station seven, is that right, Chief?
For the redundant ambulance, I believe it was, talked about station seven on the north end.
That's near my house.
I, I have two questions.
Okay.
I'm sorry, you said you were.
You said you were one.
You said you were done.
Mr. Jones, Mr. Jones, you, you go right ahead, sir, and I'll follow up.
Theo, I know you want to let me go next.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
You cut it out.
You're so kind. For the, I've kind of got the counties back here a little bit. So do you foresee additional ambulances in some of those other cities not using the ones here to go out? I mean, obviously.
Currently, they have two is my understanding. And we've only had informal conversations with folks in the county, not anything official. But we would be willing to place the same number of trucks there, if not even an additional. But that discussion hasn't happened. But if those trucks leave, then we would see that that was taken care of. So that would be in addition to what you from the city of Conway have laid out for you.
Okay.
Mr. Jones.
I'm not going to put a limit on that. I guess I shouldn't have tried anyway. But only thing I want to know, how many trucks did, did MEMS have here? Can anybody?
They had two full-time trucks and one 14-hour truck.
And so they're going to have four and a redundant truck, correct?
And with the stipulation also that if the, the run volume in Conway mandates, you would add. Okay. I do have another question. I'm sorry, Mr. Jones, were you finished, sir? Okay. Uh, I know that, I guess I'm assuming the closest county to us is Saline County.
Correct.
Okay. If they have a major, say, industrial accident in Saline County, will y'all pull ambulances from our area?
I think that everyone would want that answer to be, yes, if you were, if you had a major accident here, you would want help. But there's a lot of ambulance services closer than Saline County. So we would do a mutual aid. I have family that is, and friends in Conway County as well as Perry County. I have very good relationships with those ambulance providers and we've been a provider for quite a long time. So you would have the ability to call folks closer to this, closer than Saline County. We have extra trucks in Saline County, just like we have extra trucks here. And, you know, it's kind of the big brother thing. If I call for help and I need help and there's a bus wreck or there's a. If I call for help, and I need help, and there's a bus wreck, or there's a spill, or whatever, you want as many folks to help as possible. Same way with the tornado. If the tornado comes, you're gonna ask, you're gonna expect me to go help, but I'm not going to leave your service area totally uncovered. Another benefit of Pafford being right here and coming in and out of the county, in and out of the metropolitan area, is that we go to all four corners of the state, from Lake Village to Mississippi County, to Hempstead and Lafayette County, as well as going up to North Arkansas, as well as the Fort Smith area. So we have trucks that go in and out of the metropolitan area regularly. And that also gives us the ability to say, hey, would you pick up a patient at Baptist and drop them back off in Conway while you're on your way back to Johnson County? That gives us an, the ability to use a resource that's not here and not taking your resource out of the area. So I think there's benefits all the way around. So, in the state of Arkansas, with the number of trucks we have, we just feel like we have a, a good backup system, plus a lot of good friends and a lot of good places.
Well, I understand that concept. Conway Fire Department would, if Little Rock called today, if a major tornado went through Little Rock, the Conway Fire Department's gonna come running.
You would be mad at me if I didn't?
I, I agree. Thank you.
When do you think the integrated system might, would, would take place at some point? Anytime soon with the nine-one-one calls?
You mean, like, to start it, or you mean?
Well, like Mike said, when a call comes in, they send it to y'all at your system, but they don't talk to each other.
So I think that, I would just add one step to that. Our truck would be dispatched the same time his truck is. I mean, it's through the radio systems, and we're there, it would be the same time. The additional part of Pafford is the emergency medical dispatching, you know, in the sense of that you have a patient that's not breathing, and you want pre-arrival instructions. That's the part that we can add that you currently don't have. And Clay, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that's the way that I foresee that, that they need additional assistance, and that's when it would be a ring-down to that.
But that's gonna, you know, that could be taken care of from day one. But as far as integrating the system to, to educating the local dispatchers, that's gonna take some time. You know, that'll take a couple months to get everyone trained and get them up to the, to the level that we expect, and that the, the patients expect here.
I know Mike and I talked about, and that's a disconnect with our nine-one-one and MEMS' nine-one-one, there's a disconnect there.
And hopefully, we can bridge that gap and do as much of it locally, and we can assist and bring those, that EMD dispatch here in Conway.
And Ms. Mary, I, I just kind of want to point out again, they, they let you know the number of ambulances that your current provider has here, and that we are putting, putting more resources in your community. So when you talk about funding and things like that, and what we should pay for, I just want to make sure that the committee realizes the amount of dollars that I'm putting and investing in your community to make the system better. And I would hope that you would take that part of it in, into consideration, that you don't have two and a half trucks now, but that you have this coming aboard.
No. I hate, I hate to jump ahead to the next chapter, but according to this cover letter from MEMS, they voted to not seek an extension of this agreement with the city of Conway? So I'm guessing they aren't here tonight? Okay, well, okay. Alright, so that, alright. So, with that out there.
No, we have coverage. Let me, let me start off saying, MEMS has been a tremendous asset to Conway the entire eighteen years they've been here. And they have good people, their professional service, we appreciate the job they have done. They have, Chief reached out to Greg today and asked if they would work with us. According to the, to the contract, they, they have to give us ninety days. We don't think, if this council chooses to go with another service, that it'll be ninety days, but Chief reached out to Greg today, and Greg said, we will continue to cover Conway until March the first. So, no, MEMS, MEMS is a much too professional group to just pull out and leave someone. They wouldn't do that. Before you make a motion, and I feel like that's where you were headed? Oh, okay.
Out that we were listening to one tonight, and not, we were not, we don't have another one coming up. And this is it.
Is it Ms. Pafford or Ms. Gresham, or Ms. Pafford-Gresham?
I've, I've been married thirty-three years, and my mother-in-law understands that six days a week I go by Pafford, and on Sunday I go by Gresham.
So it's okay to call, refer to you as Ms. Pafford?
I go by Ms., I would go by Jamie Pafford.
Ms. Pafford, this is the second time I've seen your presentation, and it's very well put together and very well thought out, and I, I do appreciate, do appreciate you showing up for that. I, I understand that you don't like to talk about money, and there's been something left out of tonight's presentation that was in the first presentation. And that was about money that we need to pay you to come and be our ambulance provider. Can you help me with that and refresh my memory a little bit?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So you guys know, I didn't come knock on your door. Y'all came and knocked on my door. And we have a lot going on, and there is COVID, and, and I want to mirror what the mayor said. MEMS is a, a first-rate ambulance service, and we have all struggled through COVID. And I was very quick to point out that if you are doing something different during this time, don't blame a provider for the COVID situation that we have. And with that being said, it's my understanding that the community was looking for a possible change many years ago, and, and we think we are going in the right direction to do that. To do it in the time period that we were requested to look at doing it in because of the contract was coming up to an end, because we have COVID, because there is more of an expense to actually hire, keep, and retain people right now into this industry, whether everyone realizes that, we asked for additional assistance for the first ninety days. And Ms. Mary, MEMS actually did receive subsidy in the very, very beginning, when they came here, and then after a couple of years, they, they did away with their subsidy. So, for what we requested, is we requested ten thousand dollars a truck for the first ninety days, every thirty days. So thirty thousand dollars a truck for ninety days, to assist us with the payroll and the retention of employees and to staff those vehicles and to get them released. I mean, it is, you can do the math of what we're bringing into the community, and we're doing it at a moment's notice. We are prepared, we manage emergencies for a living, we are prepared to go in the ambulance business within the time period that's been laid out before you today, and we do have those five trucks available to do that. So I did request ninety thousand dollars for the ninety-day period.
Let me ask a quick question, and is that for four ambulances or five?
It was, I did the three, is how we did it. We just say, we, when we started this conversation, it was for three trucks, and y'all keep growing, and they keep locking me out of the room when they talk. But my initial ask was for ninety thousand dollars, and I kept my word with that from our discussion.
And is that your ask tonight?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
If y'all notice in Bryant's contract here, they're paying seven fifty a month per house that they're in, which is fifteen hundred a month, is what they're paying MEMS, I mean, is what they're paying, they're paying Bryant to come in. So, I don't think it's a big ask that the city requests that as well, for us to, to require it. And it's to either put in a kitty to build on to our stations, to make more room, whatever.
Will you give me the first ninety days free?
First, I mean, I would, but we're paying y'all hundred thousand dollars, almost ninety thousand.
Yeah, but I need it, I need it. So, um, to be cognizant of what you're saying, I understand what you're saying, and I understand your concern, and I don't want to wear out my welcome in those stations, and I don't want anyone to feel like you're giving me something for nothing, although I'm providing more trucks than anybody else. So, I would be willing to, to work with y'all on that type of agreement.
Before we cross that bridge, I would like to agree with you on this, in that you are bringing a tremendous amount of equipment and personnel to Conway, to take care of Conway people. Therefore, Ms. Smith, I will disagree with you on this one.
Well, let, let me circle around to this. Part of the reason we're here, the whole reason we're here, this started with what I'd heard was some insufficient support from MEMS, that they weren't quite cutting it, alright? And from what I understand, that was partly due to staffing, which is be understood. And so, if, I'll extrapolate, they couldn't fully staff two or three trucks, and you, you tell me you're gonna be able to fully staff four?
I'm gonna do my best, and part of that is that we believe that you have people in this community that want to take care of their citizens in their hometown, and they're not able to do that. And now, I absolutely know that, you know, there are folks that have been longtime employees, associates of MEMS, and, and they, they need to keep doing what they're doing. But we do believe that you guys have medics within your community that would like to service the people in which they live and, and are around. Now, just for numbers status sake, just because we're talking the legislature next week from the ambulance association standpoint, only forty-two percent of the EMTs that are licensed in the state of Arkansas are actually making ambulance calls right now. And that's horrible. And so, we have a, a big job in front of us as an industry to help retain our folks and get them back to taking care of people. I don't blame anybody for leaving during COVID, none of, none of us do, because it's probably not what they signed up on day one. But I hope that we're seeing some silver lining, and that we can get folks back to working on the streets, in the streets, taking care of their community. And that is part of the ask for the funding. I know that several providers, even the one that you, you mentioned, they've had to go up on, I've had to go up on my rates that I'm paying my employees to keep them staffed, and paying a huge amount of overtime right now, just to make sure that I have the resources. Some of the things that we've done to make sure that we could cover Celine County at the moment's notice is we have brought in some of our specialty response team to help make sure that we had those trucks covered. I think that you have some firemen as well that would love to get the additional education, and, and if the chief so approves of that, that they're able to pick up some extra shifts. But I really do think that it's time for us to start taking care of our own again, and I think you've got some great medics within your community.
I have another question, too. I hate to talk about money, but, but you have to sometimes. So, as opposed to MEMS, who's the other big one? What, is your pay rate similar or greater, or, I mean, can you attract these people, is what I'm asking?
I can attract. I have sixteen hundred employees, company-wide. So I, I do have a large workforce. And each, as we talked about, nothing's cookie-cutter, and each service area stands alone. What I pay in one community may not be what I pay in another because of their call volume and the type of shifts they work. And so that's the agreement that we have with the employee of what we can afford in that service area, and what that area dictates, where the Jonesboro area has a, a higher rate, so therefore, when it comes to Mississippi County, I have to somewhat meet that. I'm sure I'll have to do something similar to the metropolitan area. But it's competitive, or I wouldn't be able to be in business.
Well, that was my question.
And another thing, it's not just about pay, it's also about taking care of people. And we laid out with you what we did for the families and our employees during COVID.
Oh, yeah, that's huge.
And that also being self-insured and making sure that, you know, we have several wellness programs right now. If you're a diabetic, I want somebody on our staff working with you to see if we can make you a better, healthier lifestyle. And so that's something that we've been able to roll out. Right as COVID hit, we were just starting on that, and so we've been able to do a little bit of that, and, but we want to continue to expand on that, to have a healthy workforce, and for them to have a good work-life balance. I think that's what we're learning now, after fifty-five years of being in the business. The days of having to work an extra shift to make extra money, and that's how all of us grew up, that's not quite the same. People want a different work-life balance, and we're hopeful that we can help them find that.
My other question, and I believe that Chief and I had this conversation, but do you have, we talked about if, if I'm working a shift and, and David doesn't come in, your people stay, right? Do they have mandatory overtime? Because, as I understand, that's something that MEMS did not have.
We would hope nobody would leave holding the ambulance empty, and that's up to management staff to make sure that they know what's going on, and that we have that covered. And so that's not normal for most of our people, but it's important for me as an employer to realize that that, you know, four AM call or the seven AM call, sending someone out of town, then they get off at eight, we need to be cognizant of that and work through that, and make sure that if they have to go pick up their kids, or they have something else going on, that we're being mindful of their schedule as well. So that's a lot of the stuff that the managers have to make sure that they're taking care of, and taking care of their, their folks.
And if, let's just, the scenario that, that your people, somebody has to go to Little Becky's dance competition or something like that, and you don't have the, the staff, and somebody from the fire department has to step in, then do you compensate? I mean, how does that work?
I think first I tell Little Becky, I tell her to take the ambulance to Little Becky's recital.
Dance recital?
Yeah, y'all both go watch the dance recital would be my first answer to that question. But I don't foresee that happening, and us having to cover, in that sense of us picking up a fireman to put on an ambulance because somebody left, unless it was an absolute emergency situation, that something happened, and that would be more of a health-issue-type emergency than what you would be talking about.
I'm just spitballing here.
Yeah, that's okay, but take the ambulance, and, and we, that's some of that community stuff, we understand, and that's why it's important that if we can attract local medics to the area, then that's a blessing, and then they get to go to the football game, and they get to go to the baseball game, and they can take the ambulance. That's okay with me. I want them to have that mix.
Okay, thank you.
And Chief, I don't want to throw you under the bus, but, no, Chief Tapley, we brought him in on these discussions, too, because I know that in the past, ambulance services have worked with PD, especially SWAT, and Chief Winter and Chief Tapley, and I sat down and talked about that today. Chief, do you have any concerns?
The only thing, and like I said, today was the, today was the day that we, we discussed any of this. I'm not real sure, and I need to find out a little bit more about the integrated dispatch. I, I don't know what that consists of, or, or how that works exactly. So that's, that's my area of concern right now.
You're good as far as your SWAT team and things like that, in, in keeping those guys covered if they have a call-out?
We will, right now, we have SWAT medics that we, we utilize through MEMS. We would need to make arrangements to, to continue that.
Okay. In the meantime, fire department medics can cover with y'all, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Thank you, Chief. Didn't mean to call you out there blindside, you man.
No, that's fine. Like I said, Mike, I don't know what we're talking about with the dispatch, and that's my concern at this point.
Right. If you would, you and Chief Winter, busy about that tomorrow, and, and talk to your chief lead dispatcher out there, and get with the, with the other groups, we'll, we'll go from there. We'll get your questions answered, you had any. I understand you're gonna hire possibly off-duty firefighters? Mark Elsinger and Mark Ledbetter and I, we can all go re-certify again.
And then if you throw me, I'm driving, just for the record, y'all can get in the back, I'm driving. Incidentally, I, I didn't tell you this, but I, I would like to share with y'all, I have heard the word ambulance every day of my life. It is pretty much second nature to me, and I can appreciate the concerns that you have for your community, and I hope that I've answered them for you. But what I can tell you is that if I tell you that I'm gonna do something, whether it's the wage, or the number of trucks, or things like that, I'm gonna keep my word. And the day that I have an issue with it, I'm gonna be raising my hand and explaining what's going on, and having a conversation with you. And I think that's very important, and I do believe that that's one of the reasons that we're before you today, is that we have a long history of taking care of business and doing what we say, and keeping our word. And so I, I hope you feel that, see that, and that I just want you to know that, that I, I think I can take care of business for you and make you happy.
We appreciate everything that you've done here tonight. We've put you through the wringer, I know.
That's all right.
Ms. Pafford, how many people will you have employed?
Well, you saw.
Here.
I had a slide.
He went through the slides so quickly, I didn't get a chance to write all of it down. Eighteen and twenty-four, and there it is, right there.
I think that's a perfect world staffing, and that would definitely be the goal, and that makes everyone's life easier. Right now, I think a lot of us are having to work overtime and, and cover those extra trucks and the extra shifts. And so, you know, we want to be able to work as a community partner to make sure that we can get those additional technician, EMTs, as well as make sure that there's a robust pipeline of additional personnel coming up through your community.
One thing, Mike, I would like to say, Chief, can, can you keep us updated? I mean, because I guess we didn't really know MEMS was providing as bad service as they were just so recently, and apparently it's been going on for a while. So if there's ever an issue that, you know, we have with call logs or call runs, whatever, So if there's ever an issue that, you know, we have with call logs or call runs, whatever, if you can just keep us updated on that, because, you know, I mean, here we are, the contract ends at midnight tonight for MEMS. I mean, they're gonna stay on longer, but we're kind of pushed against the wall to make sure we get something to happen here. So just, you know, I would like to know if there's some information.
Actually, Chief brought this to my attention, August, in August, and said there was an issue there. And I know that he is, he and his staff have been trying to get this worked out for some time. We did not realize we would get to this place, but then Charles stepped up and said, "Well, realistically, the way the interlocal is written, we should be doing this every five years anyway, to see if there's any other bidders out there that want to do the same presentation, say what they can bring to Conway."
Were there any other bidders? Was there anybody else interested?
I'll let Chief answer that.
We spoke with two other companies. One of them said they really don't, they would love to be here, they don't have the resources or staffing to be here. The other company said about the same thing, and they said, they had asked if we were talking to anybody else, and we had told them the other two companies, and they said, "We're not gonna be able to stand up with Pafford." So they kind of bowed out also.
But anyway, that's when I put the task force together. I don't even remember when we did that, it's not been that long ago. But they have taken a lot of time and effort to look into all this and do what they thought was best for Conway. So my plan is, counsel, is we'll not vote on anything tonight. I will ask for a recommendation from the task force, and they will present me with one, and I will present it to you guys at the next council meeting, and it'll be up to y'all to either approve or deny what we do moving forward. Go ahead, Ms. Hawkins.
Had MEMS showed up tonight and made a presentation, much as Ms. Pafford did, we would not have voted anyway, is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, we were not gonna vote tonight, right.
Is this a request for proposal from these people?
I'm assuming, yes, I wanted them, they've already presented to the task force, I want them to present to you guys, so y'all can see exactly what they were offering Conway.
In all other, just point of order, in all other requests for proposals, it's been done in written format?
I'll let Mr. Finkenbauer answer that.
That'd be great.
Yeah, so ambulance franchises are different in a couple of ways, and I'm basing this on my reading of the statutes, but also the nature of franchising and the Attorney General's opinion weighing in on this particular question. Out of the city of Conway, believe it or not, back in nineteen ninety-seven, that was a question that was posed. Here's why it's different than ordinary purchases of goods or services, which would require competitive bidding under fourteen fifty-eight, three oh three, right? Anytime you spend more than thirty-five thousand dollars now, has to be bid out. Ambulance franchises are different because ordinarily, there's not, you're not paying for the service. There may be a subsidy that's granted, but what you're actually granting is a license, an exclusive license to provide those ambulance services. So that, the Attorney General said, because of that, you're not actually paying for anything that you have to bid out. The reason for all that is just the nature of the exclusive franchise that's required for emergency ambulance services, and that's the legislative determination which led to the passage of the statute in the first place. They said, unless you have an exclusive franchise agreement with ambulance service providers, you'll never be able to keep one in your city.
Thank you, Charles, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Jones, do you have a question?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I'm not really the smartest person in the room, but I ask a lot of dumb questions. We got one, one person applying for the, right? Why do we have to wait to choose it to, that the task force say that's what we want? Talk to me, Mike.
Yeah, I still need to work out the details, put in the ordinance.
Mayor?
Yes, sir. Wait, 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 you're with who? You're with him?
It's Ledbetter.
First time, first time.
We, the committee had prepared to bring a presentation to y'all tonight, talk to you about what we had come up with, and we'd planned on meeting with MEMS yesterday, and they didn't, you know, they didn't want to present to us. But if it's okay with you, I would like for our spokesperson to kind of give an overview of what we've done and kind of what we recommend.
You're the chairman, Mr. Ledbetter, I'm good with that.
Ms. Amanda Erby, Conway Regional, she has been chosen to be our committee spokesperson.
And if you've been to Conway Regional and have a COVID test, and you see a lady out there in high heels, done it, that's her.
That's right, that's right, high heels every day, you bet.
And I may, if you will introduce yourself, because I may have misinterpreted your.
You did, no, you did a fine job, but I'll have a do-over, just for the record. So my name is Amanda Erby. I am the Director of the Emergency Department and Critical Care Services at Conway Regional. I've been at Conway Regional for the past twenty years, so I've got a long history here, and with EMS and MEMS specifically as well. So just a brief overview of this task force. This group was put together to discuss these issues, challenges that we're having, what's gonna be best for the community, what do the citizens need? So we have had a series of three meetings prior to tonight. So our first meeting was on January the eighteenth. This was a meeting with the task force members, and also some members of MEMS, Greg Thompson specifically, and two of their board members. The content of that meeting was to discuss, from a high-level view, what are the issues at the city level? A lot of attention was focused on response times, pre-hospital. What do we as the task force and representatives of the city need? So MEMS did have some discussion. The initial city council meeting was scheduled for that following Thursday, which was the twentieth. Both parties were to present at the January twentieth council meeting. MEMS reported being unaware of this meeting, so to be fair and equitable to both parties, the meeting was rescheduled for tonight. So fast forward, then the task force meets again on January the twenty-seventh. The purpose of the meeting on the twenty-seventh was to hear from Pafford. Obviously, we can offer no recommendation or insight without hearing from both parties what their plans are, what they plan to bring to the city, how they plan to tackle the EMS needs of the residents. So the people that have presented here tonight from Pafford also presented to the task force. We asked lots of questions, went over lots of details. Then MEMS was scheduled for the same presentation yesterday, on January the thirty-first. Roughly about an hour prior to the presentation, Mr. Mark Ledbetter received notification from MEMS that they would not be presenting at the meeting, but at that time still had plans to present to the council. So here we are tonight. We've heard from Pafford, and we've had a change of events from MEMS prior to this meeting as well. So that's where the task force, what we've done up to this point. Any questions? Okay.
I can, I can say that Pafford has been well-vetted by the committee. And Chief Winter, I want to thank you for, you and your folks vetting all the services, and, you know, seeing that they would work in on the day-to-day operations of the fire department. So that said, that's, that's what we came up with.
Yes, ma'am, were you gonna say something? Okay.
No, the only thing I would say is that, just backing up to the vote tonight, and I know that the attorney probably has things, one of our concerns were is that if we were to receive the nod to go ahead, then we would put into action our plan to take care of business in a timely fashion. And so, I mean, it's seven days, it's definitely up to y'all and what you have to do, and we will be mindful of that. But I would like to be able, the sooner that folks know that you have an opportunity to work here and be here, and while other folks are offering additional benefits and sign-on bonuses and things like that, without those folks going somewhere else, I would love to be able to capture them here. That would be the only thing I'd say about the planning ahead.
I've got one more question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Jones.
You said one more three times, I counted.
She's not even from here.
It's usually worse, actually.
How long do we need for y'all, for y'all to be prepared to be here, about the thirty-first? Because that's when MEMS is gonna stop services, correct?
Twenty-eight. Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eighth, I mean, but how long, how much time do you need to get us? In case I need emergency, I don't want to have to try to ride my bike to the hospital with a broke leg, is what I'm saying.
We do have our equipment ready, we have to get staffing and staff up, and make sure that everyone's comfortable with dispatching, and make sure that we're mindful of those things. So we appreciate the additional time, the twenty-seven days, to get that in place, and we can be ready then, we can be ready sooner than that, but I think that that March first start date is more than doable.
But that, is that from right now, or from next week, when we're apparently gonna vote on it?
It's my understanding the new provider would need to take over March first, or February twenty.
Yeah, I know, but you're saying twenty-eight days is sufficient.
No.
Is twenty-one days sufficient?
I think, if I'm reading between the lines here, your biggest concern is staffing. And that, that's huge.
Special on the special on the special.
When?
I'm assuming, I'm assuming we don't have a contract ready to vote on.
Yeah, yeah.
But now, could we vote to give Charles the mayor authority to negotiate the contract based on what we've said tonight?
And present it to us next week, so they know, and we've done that before.
They can start trying to get what they need, I don't want.
I mean, I think the only thing we're dickerin' over is how much they're gonna pay for the stations and when. And that can be, y'all can figure that out in the next couple of days.
He vetoed her.
You said you wanted the first nine days, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And I can, I can live with that, I can live with that.
So do you need a, do you need a motion that says that we would like for you, the city attorney and the mayor, to pursue finalizing a contract agreement that we can approve next week?
Before I say that, yeah, what you need is a motion to, for a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into negotiations to negotiate this franchise, because I've been repeatedly attacked. Here's the reason why we don't have an agreement right now. I just need some basic things, like the term of the agreement, how long the franchise is gonna last, what are the conditions of the renewal or non-renewal, what happens if it's not renewed? You know, those kinds of things, and then some detail about the subsidy, we would need that, and then facilities agreements, all those, and those are details that are natural, that I just don't have yet, but as soon as they reach that agreement and iron out those details, I'll have them, so.
Could you have that by in the morning?
If I get the details by the morning.
So can we, so we can do a motion?
A motion for a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into the negotiations to provide me the detail that I need to write up this franchise.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Pafford, are you gonna be available to give him all that information?
I sure am, I can spit it out right now, but I'll say.
Ms. Pafford, one last question? And I promise you, I want Mr. Jones here.
Oh, really? Oh, we got a term for it now, okay.
Are your people making your times sound?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And that's part of the reason that we're here today, is that we're able to maintain our times in our service areas, and to go above, beyond, in the communities in which we serve, to take care of not just the ambulance calls, but the community as a whole.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to have this entered into the record.
Talking about read into the official record?
No.
Okay.
Just scan it in.
Absolutely.
Because there's a chance that in five years, that some of us might not be here, and I'd like to have that on file.
Fair enough. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the city attorney and the mayor's office entering into a contract negotiation with Pafford. Is that correct? Did I say that correctly? Okay, Mr. Garrett, if any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes eight to zero, we will, you and I will visit here tonight. I would, again, like to go on record and thank MEMS for the eighteen years they have served the city of Conway. They have been a professional service, their people are outstanding, they're Conway people. I know a lot of them by name, I know a lot of y'all know my name. They're a good service, they're good people. COVID has been hard on everybody, and it's been hard on MEMS, but they are a top-notch, top-tier service that has treated Conway very, very good for eighteen years.
If I can just add quickly to that, several of us were here eighteen years ago. I think you were there, and I wanted, I wanted to bring that up to shout out to late, great Sandy Brewer, who filled your role eighteen years ago.
John McMahon.
This is one of the most important things that we'll ever do, and that, I can remember those discussions way back then, and MEMS did serve us well for eighteen years, and I thank them for that.
Do you, let's quote the great Sandy Brewer, do you remember his quote about the one company? "We went to a small company out somewhere, and they brought us beer and pizza." Yeah, and Mr. Brewer came back and said, "Well, all I know is that the pizza was cold and the beer wasn't." Anyway, thank you for your presentation, the committee, the task force. I know it's been tough, because y'all have full-time jobs to do, and you're dealing with COVID as well. Mr. Ledbetter, great job. And I know the big kid there, the one with the Kansas City fan, Ty Ledbetter, and Mr. Green sat next to him, thank you for the job y'all have done as well. And I know that you did this looking out for what was best for the city of Conway. And like we said in that first go-round, eighteen years ago, Mr. Grimes, when you get down to it, all that counts is that person on the ground. And that's what y'all have tried to take care of, and I appreciate that, thank you. I'll take a most adjourned, we're adjourned.